Call this meeting to order, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for March 22nd, 2022. We'll call Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little. Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public here in the boardroom got anything they'd like to say that's not on the agenda? Anyone online? Hearing none, claims and payments?
This week's expenditures total 287,013.60 dollars and 60 cents. Secondary roads makes up 34,757. Uh, we have ARP expenditures totaling 26,200 dollars. Maintenance, 52,089 dollars. And finally Sheriff's Department, 21,843. Everything looked normal.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little. Tom, can you hear me?
Tom is having audio issues.
Okay.
He's gonna try to disconnect.
Alright, I'm not sure how to uh.
Yeah.
Signify the vote. Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning Cathy, welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning Board, Cathy Nicholas, county engineer. Uh, just a brief update on the gravel roads. Uh, they are in pretty good condition. We are entering uh one of our wet times of the year on the, on the gravel roads. They are starting to thaw slowly. The frost is coming out of the ground. Um, just due to all the rain we're, we expect to receive this week. There, there will most likely be potholes in the roads, in the gravel road system by the end of the week. Our blade crews are out, um, blading the roads. And I will also mention that they are also out. This is the time of year when we start to remove that, the grass shoulder that develops on the gravel road system over the years. We try to remove that in the early spring of the year. That means we um push the grass out onto the gravel roads. And they do look um pretty ugly for several weeks in the next uh coming month or so. So I would ask the, the public to please bear with us. This is just um the best way to maintain the system. And then also, we are also doing the same thing on the, on the paved road shoulders, removing that extra grass so that the water can drain off into the ditches as it's intended. Um, please call the office if, at 833-3008, the county engineer's office, if you have any questions or concerns. Can I answer any questions for you? Thank you.
Thank you Cathy. Anyone else in the board? Morning Nefisa.
Good morning Nefisa Boingye, Black Hawk County Public Health Director. Um, first news, our COVID-19, our community levels is low. But second news that you all probably have heard already, um, the Black Hawk County Health Department is nationally accredited. Um, oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank, thank you all very much. Um, this was a very difficult journey for us. You know, we spent the beginning of 2016 rebuilding, um, and restructuring and restructuring, rebuilding and a pandemic. Um, but really behind the scenes, the team was, you know, resilient and, and just pushed through. And um, to now be nationally accredited, i- it's a big deal for us as a county. Um, accreditation um measures um the quality of our work um through quality um improvement and performance management system, but also how we engage the governing board and also um serve our community. Um, but in addition to that, um, in the future, we're seeing where also um funding um is connected with accreditation, um accredited, um for accredited health departments. And so, um, it's just exciting for us to be where we are. And so, thank you. I know the Board of Health will be presenting to you all. Um, we, we get a plaque and there's all these other things that come along with it. And so, thank you all, but woo, we did it! Thank you.
Sure. You can certainly tell by your voice, I do. I think I love it that you are by it, but thank you. I don't know that I had any doubt that you'd become accredited. You all worked so hard um in this process. But I said, yeah, it's a great benefit to the county and so we appreciate it so much for all the work you've done.
Yes, thank you. And I've been thanking the team so much and I'm like, wait, I forgot the team today. But the team um really um just remarkable. And um, we have our two accreditation um coordinators, Josh Pacora and Toki Shelby, um, that have been very tremendous. And Josh, you, you all know, he's been also pretty active with the pandemic, but just very humble, um, these two individuals. And they go above and beyond um in supporting us and our leadership team. So, just thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online? Hearing none, we'll move on. Minutes approved for March 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have two hearings coming up after we finish the other agenda requirements. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Eight is a resolution at the contract between Black Hawk County and KM Line. Highway markings Gilbert Iowa for fiscal year 2022. Payment markings project number in L-7622 in uh various air locations throughout the county with a total bid of 118,401.68 cents. Completion date, June 24th, 2022. Liquidated damages, 800 dollars a day. Be approved and have the chair sign the same and receive and place on file certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. Cathy?
Yeah, I would just like to recommend again that you approve this contract with uh KM Line. We, they have done our payment markings in the past. They do a nice job. And this work will be completed by the end of this fiscal year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business, this resolution to set a hearing at such time as the law on publication permits and to publish notice thereof in accordance with the Iowa Code for comment, discussion, and potential initial vote on passage of amendment to county ordinance nine dash 05010. Prohibiting use of engine brakes and compression brakes as well as for decision on whether to suspend rec, requirements for additional passages at subsequent meetings as set forth by under Iowa Code, section 331, point 302. The anticipated proposed amendment would remove the phrase "or assist" before the word device in subsection A of the existing ordinance. The anticipated proposed amendment would also remove the phrase "more than 80 decibels of noise" when it drives by as measured at 50 feet from the existing ordinance and replace that phrase with loud, unusual, explosive, or otherwise disturbing noise.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Should we have set a date in there for the hearing or?
I, I think we will have a date as soon as we learn when we can get it published. And so, we will, uh, it'll still have an, uh, the publication will contain a date. Future agenda will contain a date. So we're alright with the resolution as written.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? This resolution?
Is it set in the date today?
My understanding, uh, Mr. Little, is we are approving uh to have a date set. Uh, what that date is depends upon meeting the uh, the publication window. Sometimes that varies, so we have to contact the paper, make sure we meet it. That will be on the future agenda. It will also be contained in the published notice.
Okay, so we're not really approving anything but publishing it?
Well, we are approving setting it for hearing.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? This resolution, please answer your name is called.
Chalka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a 905 hearing bid opening on the proposed fiscal year 2023. Crack ceiling project is now 911. Motion received and placed on file proof of publication as notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Thank you Cathy. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bids to be received, open in red. Bid deadline was three o'clock yesterday, 2022. All of them were received on time Cathy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm assuming there were no written comments either?
Sorry?
I said, I'm assuming there were no written comments.
There were no written comments.
Is this electronic process working well?
I think so, yeah. Uh, today we, we have looks like two electronic bids and we've also received one paper bid here. Okay, we're still working on the, the paper bid. They didn't total up their bid here. Uh, the first electronic bid comes from Denko Highway Construction Corporation. And that is 115,444.20. The second electronic bid from American Pavement Solutions Incorporated at 76,974.92. And then our paper bid from Kluzner Construction And I believe those are the three bids.
Thank you Cathy. Motion to, at the Board of Supervisors received and placed on file the bids to allow time for review. Said bids as recommended by Catherine Nicholas.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a 907 hearing and is now 914. For proposed purchase of two mortar graders for the Black Hawk County Engineer's Office.
Make a motion received and placed on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received?
Second.
Any written comments?
No sir.
Any oral comments? Hearing then, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bids to be received, open in red. Bid deadline was three o'clock yesterday. All on time Cathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Both, both bids were received on time. And I should say that our budgeted estimate was 390,000 dollars per mortar grater. We are budgeting for two, we, we did ask for two mortar graders at a budgeted estimate of 780,000 dollars. So the first bid comes to us from Cat Altorfer out of Cedar Rapids. I'm gonna, I'll just be, I will read the total bid. The total bid is 892,414.892,414.00. And this is for model Caterpillar 150. The second bid, Murphy Tractor Equipment Incorporated. The total bid is 758,000 dollars, 758,000,000,000. And that is for a John Deere 772 GP. And those, those do include the trade-in numbers, I should say, both bids.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the only two bids we got?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion at the Board of Supervisors, review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, Black Hawk County Engineer.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you Cathy. Next is a work session, discussion, considerations of all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding. James?
Good morning. I will start off. Uh, let me. Al, would you be able to move that screen up top there to probably the bottom so we can? Just for everybody in the room here. Perfect. So, everything regarding ARP on this form uh has been discussed already. It's just rather than, rather than discussing it on a department level, we're discussing it on a project level. So, when we, when we separate the categories for ARP, whether we respond to public, the public health emergency, negative economic impacts, investment in water and sewer, premium pay or retention pay, lost revenue. And then I added the external county assistance just due to uh some recent um uh requests from, from, or from other people outside of the county. So, if you look at the total requests column that I have there, uh, you're looking at about 17.7 million dollars. And if you move over to the, uh, column to the right, the assigned approved, those are the dollars that we have already allocated out of ARP. So that kind of gives us a total and it gives us a breakdown uh within each category.
And James, you explained this to me, but you're gonna have to do it again, I'm sure. Not just the approved, but you had assigned slashed approved?
Yep, so I have assigned slash approved. I, really, that's just earmarked. So there's, there's a few projects in here that are large that haven't been included in phase one or phase two because they will need time to be in phase three or phase four. So, uh, for instance, the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, that was approved for a specific dollar amount. I have that as assigned um or earmarked. I mean, you can, you can choose the word. But really, it's just, it's a total of what's been approved uh and then, uh, or earmarked. And then in phase one, that's what we, that's what we approved just to kind of get it started. Phase two. And so if you actually, if, if you actually fast forward all the way to the far right column, it says approved yet to be paid. That is what has been approved, but has not been included in phase one or phase two. So again, the Cedar Valley Nature Trail is a perfect example. Uh, that was approved for a specific dollar amount. However, it has not, not the entire project was included in phase one or phase two. So, uh, that's, that's remaining left to be paid out. Um, and then again, if you kind of move down investment, water and sewer, uh, there is.
Before you go too far.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question. I was gonna say, so then when we add the columns, and this is maybe just something I'm not clear about, when you have phase one approved, phase two approved, actually that four million six, like you said, in the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, if you went across using that line item, it is really committed or approved, so to speak.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so it is. Yeah, you're absolutely right. So, the, when you total that dollar amount down at the very bottom there for the 11, 11.5, say, um, that is what's been approved. And then in phase one, that just totals what's in phase one. And then, uh, and then phase two approved, that totals at the bottom there. If you, if you look at the far right two columns, you're looking at the phase totals, that just adds in those two columns. And then, and then the amount left to be paid is really the phase total. And then you subtract it by what's already been approved. So, uh, that five point, 5.9 million has yet to be placed in either phase one or phase two, but it has been approved.
Okay. Maybe we need another column then. I know we talked about that, but I was gonna say, just to make sure those are all clear because like you said, it really is approved and take those out, yeah.
Yeah, yep, and, yep, and so that far right column really is just saying what we have yet to pay out of what's already been approved. Um, and then if you actually look at the, at the top, the, we have the total ARP allocation for the 25.48 million. Uh, our total allocation for lost revenue uh is the 1, 1.4 million. And then on, in the row right next to that is our 10 million that's allocated towards lost revenue. Uh, and then you kind of subtract what's already been allocated. So we have 8.5 million yet to allocate out of lost revenue. We have uh 10, or yeah, 10 million, uh, that's um in eligible expenses. That's been um, that's been allocated already. So we have, we have 14 million left to allocate and 8.5 of that is lost revenue.
So, and how much, and you're saying that, how much has been spent?
The 11 point, oh, what's been.
Yeah, actually spent. I think when you're saying.
Actually paid out, actually expensed. I, I don't have that column. We don't, um, I mean, I, I, I could look. But I don't have what's actually been paid out thus far. Um, that's actually a, a check has been written.
So when you're saying the what has been paid out, and when you're mentioning it that way, you just mean approved?
Correct. So when I, yeah, so when I say, when I say phase one approved, that's, that's phase one. That's gonna be essentially a timeframe that ends at the end of this fiscal year. Phase two would, would be phase, or would be FY 23. Those were approved. But no, you're, yeah, you're right. We have not expensed um 1.9 million dollars yet in phase one.
Okay. And you do feel there's commitments that we do have to make in like 22 and 23 cash commitments on those?
Correct. So, phase, yeah, so phase one would be um what would, I mean, what we would have left. I mean, that would, if, if we don't meet that 1.9 million, uh, then yeah, we would need to carry that into phase two. Or if, if there, if a specific project didn't get completed, um, then yeah, you're absolutely right. We would have to move it into either phase two or, or kind of reassess when that is, uh, much like the budget. If it's, if it's budgeted for FY 22 and it does get done in FY 22, we need to carry it to FY 23. So, uh, but no, that's, that's the dollar amount that was approved in phase one, uh, and then the dollar amount that was approved in phase two.
Okay.
So, I have, I have everything that we've done thus far broken down, uh, even further. When we start talking about responding to public health emergency, I have it broken down by department, project, the approved estimated total, and then whether it's been in phase one or phase two. Uh, and then the phase totals, I'm gonna try to zoom out here. I don't want to make it too small. So, let me know if it's a little bit too hard to read. Um, and then, and then approved yet to be ta, yet to be paid. So again, it's, it's gonna be very similar to uh that summary page. Uh, if you scroll down, this is what I was referencing when um, when I was talking about the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. So the Cedar Valley Nature Trail uh has four, 4.2 million yet to be approved uh in a phase. So, uh, phase one was 250,000, phase two was 570,000. Uh, so it's just the difference that needs to be um laid out, whether that be in phase three or phase four. So that's where that kind of, that's where that column comes into play.
Okay. Well, and I have a question, and this is just maybe helping me understand this, maybe everyone else gets this. But I said, this, this, I thought format was helpful to me just because we're looking at the various pools of funding availability. And when I looked through some of these just briefly last night, I saw things like um, the officer, uh, recorder's office, office remodel. And that's in this public health emergency area and category. I'm assuming that's probably on hold now anyway till the space assessment, so it actually isn't um in that phase maybe at the moment. But how is that qualified, or how are we qualifying that so that that's in response to the public health emergency?
So a lot of, a lot of those qualifications fall into spreading, um, spreading employees out, uh, including barriers, whether that be uh in a cubicle, creating a barrier, or just spreading them out. So it allows, it allows for that. A lot of this, a lot of the public health um response too is really how do we navigate into uh, into the next pandemic? And, and how do we become a little bit more efficient? And that's, that's one way to do it is if we were to remodel an office to allow for separation, um, or if we were to remodel an office to, you know, let's say, allow from, you know, working from home or um, you know, transitioning a, a rotating schedule or something, just something along with uh those lines. That allows us to, to be better prepared in the next pandemic. And so those things um are, are what we kind of qualifying for, for public health.
So would we not put that almost for every department then if we make any changes in our building? I'm just.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, ideally, yeah, you're absolutely right. Ideally, that, that would be, uh, that'd be the case. But when, when you're talking about, you know, I mean, when you're talking about redoing floors, that doesn't necessarily, I mean, that's, that's, that's where this, that's where the space needs study is, is, is a difficult one to kind of, to wrap around and, and place into the bill itself. And that's why we had, we had kind of talked about using at least a portion of the lost revenue for this space needs study, just with, just with those hard to qualify expenses, if that makes sense. So.
Yeah, it makes me think that we're, there are some of these on here that we may need to rethink though, almost. I mean, just even from that, that standpoint, saying that was approved would indicate to me that we're gonna go forward with that. And we're putting it kind of in reserve or hold, right, for the space, the space assessment and what we end up doing.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of things that are hinging on space, um, space study. There was, um, there was a lot of hold on phase three just for that reason. And so, there's a lot of discussion that obviously needs to take place before we, um, you know, before we.
Well, and each decision we made could affect another decision too.
Yeah.
Yeah. That might be something we want to look at category wise to see what we are looking at seriously for the numbers and what might be impacted by the space study. Well, that, like I said, just looking at that list and, and then seeing the conservation. We have the parks listed in that for the public health emergency response. I.
What parks, I'm sorry?
Oh, we've got Cedar Valley Nature Trail, McFarlane Park, uh, Black Hawk Park Shower Replacement and those types of things.
Yep.
The conservation projects in there. And I know, um, I can see where some of those might fall under health. I suppose the um HVAC system and the concrete shower facility maybe even, I'm not sure. Mike can probably address that later. But I guess I'm thinking as far as the trails, and that was like some of my concern, I guess, with some of this. And you and I've had that discussion. I said, because there are projects that we as a county could look at for trails and those could be millions of dollars or will, would be possibility. And um even if we looked at, and I don't know that they'd qualify, but if they would, deficient bridges. And we've had that kind of discussion.
That'd be for lost revenue.
And, and some of those, like I say, we're definitely limited. While that's the most flexible category of ours, it's limited to just 10 million dollars. And our space assessment may be the same way. Unless we could, unless there's a qualifying factor that many of the things we're doing in our. And our space assessment may be the same way, unless we could, unless there's a qualifying factor that many of the things we're doing in our buildings would fall under public health. And I don't, I guess that justification of that's something I'm.
Right. So that's, that's, that's one conversation that we, that we need to have. And, you know, I, I spoke to Envision about that is, you know, really, there are gonna be, there are gonna be portions of this that do qualify, but there are gonna be portions that don't qualify. And, and so once we know what the scope of that plan really is, I mean, it's, at that point, we're gonna be able to tell, you know, what we're really looking at as far as using ARP funds. So until we really kind of hammer down a scope, that one's, that one's gonna be a little bit of a gray area. But yeah, you're absolutely right, because part of that project would qualify and part of it would have to be in lost revenue. I mean, we'll, we'll just have to cross that bridge when, when we know, kind of narrow that down a little bit.
So, and that's what I guess I'm concerned about, that we just kind of keep narrowing down, or at least making sure where the scope and focus is close and doable. The conservation, and maybe Chris can answer this better than I, but I was thinking, when we looked at the conservation projects of parks and trails. There was an email we got from Rob Sands saying that parks and, parks and trails, I suppose, those types of things that were available for public purposes. And available to all people could be included, but that they would be, they would have to be in the negative impact.
Negative economic impact?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I don't think we have anything in that, but I was just wondering, was, yeah, addressing negative economic impacts. Do you remember that, Chris, or do you?
I, I do believe that that is, it's been a while, but I do believe that is what the, where they classify it at.
And maybe Mike does too. I was gonna say, Mike maybe knows also.
And, and, and we can shift that over. You know, when, when looking at negative economic impacts, it was a lot to do with delivery assistance to workers or families, support small businesses. Speed the recovery of the impacted industries. So I think that's part of what they're, what they're discussing is the, is the tourism and the travel aspect of that. But I.
I think it was the maintenance and things like that at parks, they had harder use, or people were out there utilizing them more and some of those things. So I guess that's where I'm just wondering if there's a, any, a formula or something that we need to be looking at that qualifies some of those projects? Because it would make dollars in other categories, rather than all in public health, if we can.
Well, and, and, and keep in mind too, the, the category, I mean, whether it's, whether it's in investment in water and sewer, or, or public health, or negative economic impacts. It's, it's really just, these are, I guess, just categories of, of what qualifies. I don't, I, I guess I don't want to be too hung up on if it's, if it's in this, if it's in this project, or if it's.
This pool versus another, yeah.
Really, if, everything that, all of these different categories qualify under the ARP funds. The only one that's a little bit different is that lost revenue, which qualifies for a plethora of different government services. And so that's the ones that we kind of need to, I guess.
So we can load these up regardless, anyway, we want to go up to a point of twenty five million, except for the twen, the ten million.
Correct.
It's gotta be very specific, and we've already utilized, you said, some funding there.
Right. Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, we, there's, there's a lot of municipalities that are just sticking it all into their, their sewer projects. So they have a hundred percent into their water and sewer category, and nothing in lost revenue, or nothing in responding to public health. So those, I guess I don't want to get too hung up on, on the specific category, and quite frankly, it's, it's.
I don't either, except if we have to make arguments for it, I guess. I was just thinking, like even, and there was another question, and this is just something I should have asked before too. But I said, while we've placed, let me see, with the sheriff's intake building, I looked at that last night, the evidence intake building. And that's under the public health emergency. And we make an argument for that as being. I guess what health need or what response did we address with that?
Yep, and, and I'd, I'd reach out to both Tony and Mark, and, and Mark had drawn up this, this nice letter pertaining to public health. A lot of it had to do with hygienic areas and the flow of, of air when, when, when officers are in the intake facility that they're in now. It doesn't quite, I guess, fit the mold of what they, of what they're hoping to accomplish. And getting this into evidence intake facility is, is something that would help address that. And so I don't want to speak too much on it, just because that's a little bit out of my realm, and, and I would rather, I'd, I'd rather have Mark or Tony speak to that specifically. But I believe they, they addressed that when that was approved.
I know from the jail pods, it probably was definitely something they were thinking of too, with spacing and that type of thing being better. I just thought, I guess, I just want to make sure, I guess, when we go through these, that we are able to justify them in case we would get audited or. And I don't, I think early on, we were all very consumed with understanding the process and knowing it and trying to work our way through it. And, and I just want to make sure, I guess, we get, can access the dollars that we need to. But knowing that the flexibility part of the lost revenue is really gonna be a very limited number of dollars where we can expand that. So then it concerns me, I guess, a little bit with all the needs.
You got the paperwork to, to explain, you know, what, what fit under the health part of it, James, that you could send to us, so we could maybe better understand it. Because as far as I'm concerned, most of this, you know, that we've been talking about would fit under health because of all the things that we need to do to make sure that if another pandemic sets in, we'd be safe and, or safer than we have, haven't, have been in the past.
Right.
Yeah, and many of those were obviously not even questions.
Yeah, even like the shower out at one of the parks, that, that would fit under there as far as I'm concerned.
So.
Maybe it is under there, I don't know.
Yeah.
And, and there's a few things that aren't on this list that have, that have kind of been discussed or talked about. There was, I know, in speaking with Al, there's a lot of IT items that he wants to, that he wants to address. I know, I know Amanda with NHR wants to talk about a, a salary study or a compensation study. So that's, that can be addressed as well. So there's, there's still things that need to be adjusted on here, and, and they can address those, they can address those if, if you would like.
Yeah, I guess, I think today, I mean, it's been so long since we've had an ARP session, and I guess I think that's something, before long, we'll be back in budget sessions again. So as much as we can make progress on where we're going with all this, and I know the space assessment is holding up a few things too, so that's important. But I just thought, yes, I know, I was gonna ask this question, I know we've seen, and I know Al's talked to us about unamended or phase two additional items to put in. Are they included in this?
No, no, they are not. So anything, I've, I've yet to. Whether I've seen it, or whether, I, I haven't gone through Al's adjusted ARP list. When the previous IT director was here, she had included, included some items for phase one and a little bit on phase two. So I believe right when Al got here, he had a brief look over phase two, but he wanted, he wanted a little bit of time to adjust that phase two. And then there was, and then the, the compensation study for, for human resources as well. Those, those are not on this list.
Okay. Well, and if they're prepared at all to talk about it today, not to have specifics, but I was gonna say, conservation, I know at the last conservation board meeting that I attended. There was a board member of theirs that asked where we were at with phase three and where the conservation projects were going to be and what Mike was putting together. And he said he still needed some time to work to get those together, but I think he's got a lot of information, probably he could even provide today, just because they do their five-year planning. I know, so, yeah, I'd really like, if everybody would, to hear some of those updates, I think. And I think this is like something we still are gonna have to go forward on and do, I guess, not wait too long to get some of those things on our plate to be looking at. I know the space assessment's in a couple of weeks, or another step in it anyway.
Yeah, that one, that one's really holding up, quite frankly, quite a bit of, quite a bit of items, especially with any remodels or anything like that. We do have, we do have until December of twenty twenty four to allocate it. So I agree, we need to be vigilant in, in making sure that we're, we're spending these dollars. But, you know, the, the other, you know, the other hand of that is, maybe we kind of pump the brakes and, and let the dust settle just, just a little bit, and just kind of see where these are. You know, when we had set these dollar amounts, they were estimates. And so the one thing that I guess would concern me is if we, you know, if we allocate every nickel of this, and then we get down to it, and then something comes in over budget.
Well, I think that's what you and I talked about too. I said, and I don't want to see us really keep approving things necessarily, either to pump the brakes in that sense, but I think we need a plan, and that's kind of.
Absolutely. Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And things that we can look at, like all of a sudden, we look at, we're faced with things and say, hey, this is a great project, but this one's really a priority for us as a board, we'd like to do. And so then somewhat a disappointed audience or group for what we could do going forward. And that's what really concerns me, I guess, with that flexibility count, the lost revenue. And the fact that we have other needs out there in communities that want to approach us as well. And so, yeah, I, I know there were a couple of projects you had on the hold that were some of those, we had the Elkhorn Raymond one is included in that, just because we'd heard their request.
Yeah, a lot of these, a lot of these identified, identified projects on hold, you know, for instance, HVAC maintenance renovate, or renovation for Pine Crest on fifth floor.
Yeah.
That just makes sense to wait until we have that space study done. The new signage, new drainage down, downspouts, I mean.
The top ones, I think we all just pulled out of maintenance, right? So we knew we were holding on those. But like I say, the sheriffs we left on there, just because that was their request, right?
Yep, yep. The jail addition was on there, and they've.
Health clinic.
That. The mobile health clinic, that was, that was discussed, premium pay was discussed. And then Elkhorn Heights Raymond, the Dolly Parton Library project, that was discussed during budget.
Yeah.
During budget as well.
I remember Chris made that comment or possible request.
Yep, and then Camera Two spoke about a, a food farm, or I, I don't believe I'm describing that as well as.
Incubator farm.
Uh, yeah, an incubation farm, thank you.
Although he, he didn't, he hasn't requested it from us. I think he was hoping.
He just spoke, yeah, he just, he, he spoke to it a little bit, and, and was kind of hoping that he would have a little bit more information about that for when that time comes. So these are just kind of, like I said, the identified projects that essentially were placed on hold or kind of put to the side, or however you want to describe it, so.
So you, you don't have anything then in phase three? What we have here is everything that's been requested.
Correct.
Whether we've allocated or not.
Besides, besides Al's, Al's list, but yeah, and, and I don't know, Al, if you wanted to kind of talk and, and give a brief update on just kind of where your list is at. Just, just some brief items on there, and then perhaps Amanda can kind of discuss the compensation study as well.
Sure. And Mike too, or Kathy, I guess I'd like to hear from everybody if they've got anything that they're thinking might be coming up, or what their thoughts are on their departments.
Hello, Board. Hi, it's Al, I see Director. I have maybe shared this with some of you, but just some of the things that we have on here, and then like James said, a lot of this is contingent on the space study. So I have a lot of items, but depending on how the space study goes, I don't, you know, that, some of the things may, may change or fluctuate. But just to highlight some of the major things that we are looking at is just staff laptops. So in, in order to be COVID readiness, we want to make sure that we have that flexibility for employees to work from home. So we have allocated, well, the number keeps growing, so since last time I showed some of you, the number's gone up. So as I keep speaking with the different departments and their needs. So as of right now, I have roughly thirty seven laptops that are earmarked for, for the next phase. Along with those laptops include docking stations of equal number, as well as webcams and things like that. So another need, a couple, a couple of tablets for engineering. One major need that, that the county I've noticed really, really needs assessed and improved is monitors. So as I've looked at all the workstations, there's a lot of monitors that are really old or mismatched. And I think that, that needs to be addressed, because they're, they're going on ten years old. They're, they're, so they're, at the moment, I have a hundred and sixty monitors requested, and that probably doesn't even cover this building alone. But I think we can take what's existing, maybe trickle some of that down. So that's just what I kind of briefly listed on there, wasn't a, I can, I can readdress that too by, by an exact count, so. Other highlights would be network equipment, like a lot of network switches. I think we need some new equipment. But that is also contingent on, on the space study. So if we expand those switches, those numbers may fluctuate because of that. As well, I think I have on here some, some wiring, some potential fiber runs, also contingent on, on space assessment. And then we do have a disaster recovery backup project that's upcoming. So we have a server, we do have a server project upgrade that's, that's budgeted for this year. I just have to get that approved with the bids and everything. The old server will go out to Hartman Reserve and become the immutable backup for the Cole County. So immutable, meaning that if we get hit by ransomware, it cannot affect any of the data that's on there. So it's, it's totally safe, completely off-site, and it'll update, it'll back up daily. So, and that's, that's a good best practice, and we sort of have some of that right now. But with the amount of data that we're pushing, we really, really need to do these improvements to accommodate for, because we have a lot of stuff to store.
So you said you've, you've increased some of the equipment, so I assume your number increased as well?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the number increased, and mind you, everything on my list, and I apologize, I don't have mine to show you guys.
No, that's fine. I was just asking to kind of get us back on track. That's kind of why I wanted to do this, so.
Sure, sure. The amount right now is, is, well, like I said, this is an estimate. Right now, it is over eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, that will fluctuate, that isn't, that's not all set in stone, so a lot of that can, can change because of the space assessment. And I'm welcome to have conversations again regarding this, to, you know, go in more detail.
I think for the most part, James, most of our numbers are estimates.
Oh, absolutely.
So just putting that in for now at least plugs it in, but I think we should have it in, you know, included.
And with chip shortage and, and things like that, a lot of my individual unit costs are higher for my estimates. So I, I do expect them to be, to be cheaper, hopefully. So, kind of depends on what goes on with.
Nothing else is right now, but yeah, maybe that will be.
Sorry, I kind of rambled on.
No, no, I guess that was great.
You guys were interested in besides some of those highlights?
No, does it make sense though? I think we include that at least in our list, that it should be listed.
That's for phase three, right?
Um, this is, I'm hoping amend for phase two, some of it can be phase three. Like, for sure, like laptop things, I would like phase two FY twenty three.
If you had to do a priority type of thing, is that what you're thinking, or?
Yeah, that's, that's what everybody else is doing.
So for, for sure, the computers, I would like to see computers, network infrastructure, server stuff with.
And going back, everything is contingent on what we end up with this space study.
Anything could be shifted.
We can talk about all this stuff all we want, but it, it could turn completely around.
Well, I guess that's the part, I think, I want James to identify for us.
Turned everybody around.
Yeah, it did. And I think there might be some other things turned around on us, but that's why I think there are certain dollars we've committed to that are really kind of off the table, that, that we've made those commitments to. And so those are not something we can look at later and say, hey, I don't like this project as well as I do the other. So that's, I think, just going forward. I think, Mike, I, I hope he's prepared to talk today too, but no, that was great. The eight hundred thousand, I guess, is where I was wondering too, if that should be inserted and, thank you.
Thank you.
Trails is much more important than study.
Just butted right in, so made a man to sit down. Mike Hendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Yeah, I'm really glad we're talking about this today, because along the lines of, you know, phase one and phase two, and, and as all these things developed. You know, there's a little confusion involved, I think, and, and I guess I was kind of made aware of it this morning with those numbers. You know, we, we came forward with, and I want to talk specifically about Cedar Valley Nature Trail right now. We came forward with those numbers in phase one for. We came forward with those numbers in phase one for preliminary engineering and design. And, and that was for division one. Division one was hard surfacing the last nine and a half miles of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Had nothing to do with what we call division two, starting in Evansdale, coming all the way back down the trail to where the hard surface meets the, the soft trail right now. Included in division two were 10 bridges that either need repair or replacement. So there's a huge cost there. So as we talked about, uh, division one and the resurfacing in the preliminary engineering, which was the not to exceed 250,000, which we approved in phase one. We talked about that project estimating it being four million, 4.2 million, something like that. And, and it looks like that's what's kind of been at least earmarked, uh, to this point. Not approved, but earmarked. But as we moved along and Origin, uh, the engineering company was able to move forward a lot quicker than what we thought. They were able to do some pretty extensive work on division two, uh, including the bridges and, and the resurfacing of 16 miles of trail that already has some asphalt to it. And, and again, I, I believe I mentioned a couple of times up here at budget time. And then also when we were talking about some of the phase two projects, I'd mentioned that once we include division two in there, we're looking at $8 million, um, if we were going to do the whole thing. Now, yeah, our goal, in, in a perfect world, we'd like to do the whole thing. We're not expecting, you know, that to happen unless, you know, the money is, is just there to do that. But it's important that you're aware that, that these are the kinds of dollars we're looking at if we were going to get the whole thing done. When we came back in phase two, then, um, the $570,000 that we asked for, for, uh, the engineering for phase two, that would then complete the entire trail, um, excluding the construction costs, obviously. But the 570,000 will get us to those dollar amounts and we'll have those dollar amounts in July. And that would be, they'll give us a number for the entire trail. That's going to be a total of 11 bridges, uh, resurfacing 16 and a half miles of trail, hard surfacing the nine and a half miles of trail. It's, it's all going to be in one package. And obviously now with the increase in fuel costs and some different things like that, the eight million isn't even going, you know, that's not even going to do it either. And, and we've already found that out. We've already had these conversations with Origin. We had a big meeting here about three weeks ago, um, and a lot of reality has set in. But, uh, it doesn't, you know, common sense to us is that as long as these fuel prices are going to be the way they are, um, and, and whatever has stirred that up, whether it's the problems over, you know, across the seas or whatever it is, we'd be silly to take those numbers in July, I think, and go out for bid. And that's what we'll get from, from Origin in July. We will be prepared to go out for bid for construction, but I think we'd be silly to do that. I, I'm, I'm just going to say it's worth taking a chance to sit on this for a while before we go out and hope that those fuel costs come back down. Because the unbelievable increase in cost, which now they're telling us this whole thing can run $11 million if we wanted to do the whole thing, these incredible costs are, are for fuel and asphalt. That's the problem. Those prices have gone way up. And so that's what kind of, you know, when I mentioned eight million, we had a pretty good feeling that that would do everything. And, um, and that seemed pretty reasonable to get that entire trail taken care of with these kinds of dollars and get it off of our back and get it off the taxpayers' back. And then we were on our way and all that's changed now and, and obviously. So, so what we're looking to do with that, so just so you have this in mind, what we'll be doing with that down the road is we'll be bringing in options. There will be an option A, uh, for example, that would be everything. There will be an option B that would say, that would be, let's do division one or hard surface the nine and a half miles of trail. Let's get that part of it done. And then the structures on division two, the bridges, those are the things that are hard to fund. Those are the things that we fight year after year after year with state rec trail dollars, federal rec trail dollars, tap dollars. The pools are so tiny, um, you know, we, we apply for, uh, money through state rec trail, for example, and, uh, the, the, the pool will be a million bucks or 1.2 million dollars. And there's $40 million worth of projects across the state. It's like winning the lottery for those things and we just get on this vicious merry-go-round and we go round and round and round. And, you know, once in a while your number gets pulled and, and, but usually you just get on it and just keep doing it year after year. We spend a lot of time chasing those dollars, but then again, that's what we do. So anyway, just to keep that in mind, you know, we'll have, we'll bring an option A, we'll bring an option B, we'll bring an option C. And that might be just, just resurfacing the nine and a half miles of trail. And that would be a huge thing. It would, it would be really, really big. So, but I guess my point here today is there's a lot more to all this than, and, and we're finding that out. And this isn't the only project that we'll find out, and I think other departments are going to find that out too. As you start to get this engineering done, um, you know, you start, things start coming back that, that you just didn't realize were going to be out there. You know, we've got a couple of other things. The Hickory Hills Lagoon, uh, project, which we approved in phase one is, is going well. Snyder and Associates is just starting to get that finished up and they'll get that, uh, final design sent to the DNR to get it approved. And we'll be able to move and those numbers seem to be really good. They, they haven't fluctuated much. So I think we're good that way. There are other things on there, the McFarland septic system. We're getting ready to go out, uh, to bid with an engineer to only bring that project to understand what the permitting process would be for that septic system. So we will stop that process. If the permitting is too wild, we've, once again, this is one of these things that once we, we dive into it, we've found out that, um, there could be little intangibles that we didn't expect that could end up being way more than what we thought it was going to be. And so, you know, a project like that, we may walk back in here and say, you know what, you guys, we just, we just don't think we can do it. But we're finding all these things out. And so, um, these dollars are going, what we've come up here and tell you are going to change drastically. Maybe from month to month, maybe from six months to six months. But again, I, I guess the point is, um, uh, there's, there's a lot out there. I mean, conservation alone, we got a, we got a lot we could lay up at this table, but I, I realize there's a lot of other asks too. But keep that in mind as we go through all this because there's, there's just a lot that could be done. You know, the, the, uh, the Black Hawk Shower Building, we're having, we're just about ready to go out with an RFP for that, for the engineering to take a look at that. So all these things are moving along pretty good. But again, these estimates that we gave you for constructions are just, I mean, it's just a shot in the dark. We know construction costs are up. If it's involving steel or anything like that, you know, that's an issue. Origin has talked to us back to the Seaver Island Nature Trail again, they've talked about, you know, bridge beams being, you know, 10 to 12 months out, whether they can even get them or not. So all these things are, are very fluid and, and changing almost by the day. So I think, um, it's probably going to be important that we keep giving updates, uh, quite frequently as we get this information. And, uh, and again, the big thing for us is that Cedar Valley Nature Trail, but it's just, it's just a lot more than, uh, we've been told already that it's a lot more than what we were hoping for that, that it would be. So anyway, any questions at all for any of our projects?
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that about the eight to 11 million dollars and taking into consideration, you know, what that would do to the project and looking, maybe putting it on hold for a while, some of the parts of it. Thank you very much.
Yep. We'll try to get the most, whatever dollar amounts you guys decide. And that may be the, the situation we have with that is just have to say, well, you know, this is all we can go with. And then we'll make that go as far as we possibly can. So.
Yeah.
That's our game plan.
Yeah. It sounds a lot like budget to me, kind of where they come with priorities, like you said, when we take a look at those.
Amanda? You?
Good morning. Amanda Fesmire, Human Resources Director. So I want to just take a couple of minutes of your time to talk about the, um, ARPA request that I had made during budget, um, or at least kind of brought to your guys' attention was the compensation study for, um, our classification plan for the various jobs that we have here at the county. So I've since gotten some more information on that and communicating with other counties throughout our state that have done these or are currently doing them as we see inflation rates rise and retention and recruitment continue to be a challenge in competing with, uh, other employers. So, um, just to give you guys some data, uh, we on average have about 50 resignations a year. About a third of those are retirements and that's been from 2019 to current. This year, right now, since January 1st, I've had 15 resignations of those, two of them have been retirements. So, you know, we're doing a lot, our departments, when it comes to backfilling positions, whether it's retirements or resignations, uh, for whatever reason people are leaving. But about 35 people a year, employees, uh, leave our organization, not due to a retirement. So how that compares to statistics, uh, you know, with the, the BLS, they say turnover with state and local government is about anywhere from 15 to 20%. So we're kind of right in there. And then of course, just, uh, also want to highlight, you know, when we talk about a compensation study, what does that really mean? Well, it's taking a look at our structure, taking a look at, um, the labor market and determining where do we fall with the wages that we currently have. The last time we did an evaluation, um, a full evaluation was back in the eighties, which isn't super uncommon for government structures to, um, not look at these as often as maybe the private sector. But, um, so in the eighties, they came up with this non-bargaining GS scale, which we've been maintained since then. We've been able to stay relatively competitive throughout the years. But we've always, in my experience in doing these on a one-on-one basis with different roles that have been really out of whack, we generally lag the market by at least 10% and we're seeing that grow, um, even more dramatically throughout the different roles in the county. So, um, within our handbook, you know, I do just want to kind of highlight a few things. It says our compensation plan, Black Hawk County strives to offer employees competitive wages with, within the labor market. And then it does say that, you know, uh, we tend to look at this periodically and make adjustments when needed. We look at, you know, pay ranges are, uh, established within the relatively, relative difficulty and responsibility of the work, recruiting experience of the county, the prevailing rates of pay in both public service and private industry, the cost of living factors, the financial policies and position of the county and other pertinent economic considerations. So, um, what we've been hearing in the past that, you know, again, we do want to, we say that we want to offer competitive wages. I think we have an opportunity here to evaluate how competitive are we? We have done it with law enforcement this last go-around with the union. I think we're going to be, the issues that we're experiencing when it comes to recruitment right now, as well as turnover, is that we're having a harder time, um, getting our top pick, I would say. Like we have a smaller candidate pools, um, now more than ever at times, depending on the position. And then we're usually having to go down to the second or third candidate because those top candidates are, um, we're not meeting their needs when it comes to compensation or it comes to the total rewards package here at the county, whether that be benefits or flexible work, tuition reimbursement, work-life balance, um, things like that. So compensation study, how this would look would be an RFP that, um, if the board wishes to engage in this kind of study, one that we would put out for, uh, professional companies to bid on. We could establish a scope within that as to what positions we would be considering in that and which ones we want to look at in-house as in our HR office support. Generally, um, working with other cities and counties, what I've learned is that the non-bargaining scale is, is done by a, uh, private company like a, a consultant to come in. And then, um, the union wages are typically done in-house and, and at, at negotiations. But something that we can prepare for when we go to negotiations here in the fall of 2023. So, um, the cost of this, uh, it ranges, I've seen at the highest end, what a similar, a little bit larger county than us, they spend about $57,000 for this service. I've seen it, um, $20,000. So, um, I would estimate probably for our size, anywhere from 30 to 40,000, um, if we wanted to, uh, have this, uh, get evaluated and possibly look at even restructuring the different, uh, pay increases for non-bargaining. Several of you have been here when we had equity, internal equity issues, um, and we did get to address some of that. The previous HR director was able to, um, you know, work with the board so that they adopted a policy to get people moving up to midpoint. Once you hit midpoint though, it's pretty stagnant. It's a, may take you 20 years to reach not even the top of your scale, but the, um, just the fourth quartile because you move at 1%, which is pretty, um, small increments. So. It's a lot to take in, a lot to consider. Um, like I said, I mean, um, and it really depends on where you guys want to fall when it comes to being competitive. And, um, and I just don't think the recruitment and retention is probably, those issues aren't going to go any, they're not going to diminish. They're going to continue to rise. We have a lot of people looking into moving on to retirement. We want to keep people that we bring in. And there's a lot of job availability out there right now. And even those that are really competitive, leading the market in wages or meeting the market are still struggling. So we just don't want to come, compound our recruitment efforts, um, to meet the services of the public any worse. But that's, so I, I guess that's, um, I, you know, I did bring it up at budget and didn't have quite as much information at that time. But, um, whether it's phase two, phase three, something that I'd like to kind of, I think I had 60,000, James. I think that was the amount that I had in there.
And you said typically it's a consultant or contractor does the non-bargaining?
Right. That's what I, um, right. And typically, um, because bargaining is so much about wages. And now, uh, and we, the bargaining information is really, um, it's very straightforward. All those contracts are public information. Non-bargaining, um, it's, could be step increases. It could be a hybrid like what we have. It could just be ranges. It's kind of, it could be pay for performance. There's a lot of different models to consider. Why, um, I think having an expert in a outside, more objective perspective, one that works with them. I know there's someone that used a company out of Georgia that they exclusively work with public sector, um, entities. And a lot of their staff came from the public sector. So they can really tailor and understand our kind of unique structure here in that we're not always competing with the private sector. I mean, we are competing, but it's not, um, we can't offer bonuses the way the private sector can. And there is situations, um, that they can do certain kind of raises and things like that. So.
In those numbers that you've provided, I know like we saw in the last couple of weeks, the assessors offices had lost to, or we're all losing, I guess, to long-term employees.
Mm-hmm.
To other counties. Um, are their numbers included in ours or is that separate from us?
So those are included. Um, we, we do provide HR services to them. Right now of that 15 that we've lost, most of them, we've had, um, about a third are from the sheriff. Public health is a big one. We had assessors, we've had maintenance, we've had conservation. So it's, it's starting to trickle down. It's, you know, we were putting a lot of focus on law enforcement, but we want to get ahead of this too for the other departments as well. And again, I come, I do want to note that it doesn't mean everybody's getting raises. I mean, it's going, it's just, it's a, an assessment to determine, okay, where do we fall? Where's the data? How do we align to this? What are our benchmarks? And some people may be fine. Some people may need to be frozen. Some people may need to, um, move up. And that still doesn't mean that this consultant, it's just they, they provide that information for you all to make an informed decision, a strategic decision, um, as to do you want to lag the market, meet the market or lead it when it comes to compensation. And this is one piece of a total reward system here. You know, there's again, benefits, there's, um, time off, work-life balance, things like that, that we can also look to address.
What are our exit, um, people that are leaving? What are some of the main reasons?
Work-life balance and wages are a big one. I don't often hear people complain about benefits. People think IFRS are great, oh, you know, we're mandated to provide IFRS. They say our health insurance is good. Complaints about, you know, and again, we don't have them with the unions that, especially this last couple of years, that you don't get to use time off right away. I mean, work-life balance is a huge one with this generation and it's kind of impacting the, um, previous generations as well. But I hear wages mostly that were not competitive. I get a lot of people that are concerned about when people are retiring, how we're going to be able to backfill. We've had honestly a lull right now in applicants in certain roles, um, ones that we didn't have to struggle much before. Just the applicant pool hasn't, isn't really there.
I know, um, one individual left the health department and it wasn't for wages and it wasn't for benefits. They went to another job locally that pays less in both those areas. So there was other factors involved there. I know another individual that's worked with the county that left is in another city. So they were obviously moving to another area. So I don't think a lot of it, or most of it is wages. I think there's a lot of variables. Because if you do have an individual that leaves, it's going to make less money and less benefits. There's something else there. Is that correct?
Well, I don't think anybody comes here to make a lot of money, to be honest.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that they're not leaving because they're not making money. There's a whole bunch of variables and this is a good case. I talked to this individual a week ago. She called me and, uh, she, uh, told me exactly, um, why she was leaving. was leaving. And again, it wasn't wages or benefits.
Well, I think I know which person you're talking about. I think their exit survey actually did highlight wages. So I could talk to you about that. But it was, because I do know out of the public health couple, and, and sure, there's always other reasons why people leave, other, you know, opportunities. Again, we just want to be cognizant of the fact that, for example, you know, we did a 3% across the board for non-bargaining, which is a good increase, but we're seeing counties go to 4% and 5%. So it's just going to further separate us from being competitive. And you're absolutely right, Tom, that yeah, there's other factors always. We talked about that with law enforcement when it came to forced overtime and schedule changes. Compensation's a pretty, you know, it's just whether you guys want to, how you guys want to position yourselves as an organization with our workforce and going forward, how competitive we want to be. It's not going to mean everybody's going to stay here because they get, you know, more money. There's always going to be a wide range of factors why people leave, but it's pretty consistent that we run below the market when it comes to wages.
Yeah, you also mentioned that you didn't feel, or I, I was a little confused there, that we're not getting top-tier people. We hired in some of our major positions, including yourself, finance director and IT director, and I kind of consider them as top-tier people. They're all professionals, so I guess I was a little confused what you meant by that.
So the departments are struggling that they're making two and three and four offers before someone accepts. So no, it's not always ones that you guys see. And usually department head levels, you're going to have more of a higher caliber of candidates because it's a higher level of responsibility. These sometimes are entry-level roles that people are just feeling that.
Entering the workforce.
Yes, and so it's, it's not, when I say top, to me, it's that you got your candidate pool, you've gone through the selection process, you've gone through the recruiting, you've, you've done your interviews, you're like, I've got my number one candidate. And number one denied, you know, declines it, number two declines it. We've seen that across multiple departments. Now, it's not every job, but I'm starting to see it more in like clerical roles in certain areas that I hadn't expected it. You know, public health has had its fair share of going down that path. So, but you're right, we do have some, and I would say department head level, you don't have, because it's, there is a higher salary there. There's an opportunity to get that experience at that high-level role.
Your statement was more on the lower echelon, bargaining people and so forth?
Bargaining, definitely, because you can't start them, it's, that's the wage. And we often have to explain mid-level management, non-bargaining to some extent because sometimes it's, well, my, you know, I'm getting paid this. Well, I understand, but this is what we can do. We can bring you to midpoint. And sometimes their experience warrants a higher, you know, increase, and they're just not willing to settle for what we can offer.
Are we, are you saying, or are we thinking that we're better off or worse off than others? I mean, we see, all of us are fully aware of the signs, the places that are closing because they can't get help and so forth. But are you saying we're worse than what's going on around this country in hiring people? Or are we above that? Skip, I mean, I, I don't think we're in a critical stage of hiring people, are we?
And I'm, I'm not bringing this to you as like, oh, this is something we have to do today. It's more of a strategic, so where you guys see yourself going forward? Do you want to be meeting the market? Do we know where the market is? Do we want to make those adjustments? And some of it is too, that, you know, going back to the, those that are doing the work here, are we underpaying people? Are we comfortable with that? Now, I don't assess the entire, you know, looking at the nation. I look at, you know, generally similar-sized counties and cities. And again, you know, our, our retention right now, I wouldn't say is totally off the scale, with the exception of, as we explored, law enforcement, that that's just a, a challenge. But, so no, we're not in a, a critical condition, but I don't want it to hinder us from being able to attract and retain people. And I don't want our wages to hold us back.
I can appreciate it. I know I've always asked over the years when hiring somebody, are we comparable to other governments for what they wage? And I was always told, yes, we aren't, sometimes even above. So I, I don't know. I, I see where you're coming from.
Sure.
Assuming you're looking towards the future.
Yeah.
On this, years ago, we went through, was going to do a step, a step betting on this, and I think the price tag was like $400,000 to have somebody come in and do a consulting with us. And that's why that never happened. But I think overall, we do a pretty good job and we got pretty good employees.
Yeah, and again, you know, it's just, it's kind of, I think we're very fortunate. We have a lot of longevity here. We had people that have been very committed to their roles, a lot of 20-plus, 30-plus years of service. I don't know we're going to see that in the next several years. I think that's.
I don't think anybody is.
No. So we have to find, you know, what is it that we can do to get people to stay here five years, seven years, 10 years? And, and if people don't feel like they're going to grow to their full potential of their salary, it's just, it tends to be a turnoff to where can I go to? It's almost like we need to kind of adjust our, our model and our strategy somewhat and just, and I thought the ARPA, you know, it's an opportunity to do this. You know, that $400,000 ticket, that might have been the wage increases if you, I don't know where that, or maybe, I'm not sure where that came from. But, and that's something that, you know, if you go through this assessment, just like the other things that you guys have paid for under ARPA, you know, you want to do something with the information. Doesn't mean that you have to, you know, that we don't have to be the number one highest-paid county employer, I guess, or a local government employer, but we do want to make sure that we're competitive, so.
I agree with you 100%. The only thing, you know, the difference with government and public sector is our condition can change yearly due to the fact that we're financed by taxes. And usually in the end, it comes down to two things, services or people.
Yeah.
You know, or raise taxes. And we're not like a corporation that can make profits and, and, you know, give out bonuses and stuff like that, so. I know where we're coming.
And I think if we can be strategic, just even like, you know, if there is, we get to the point, this is something you move forward with, and there is kind of a sticker shack, if you're able to offset that with however you guys, you know, in order to not put any burden on anyone, you know, again, the factors that we've looked at, it's hard for me to ignore that this isn't an opportune time to look at this because of the information that have come out about the county and its financial well-being, because of the labor market, because we do run generally below market. It's just a, an opportunity that I'd like the board to consider exploring, so. But I really appreciate the discussion and.
The other thing, the last thing I want to say is, it's important to also understand we're losing people for other reasons. And I've been, with it last, I want to say month, maybe two months, I've had three employees calling me, so anybody who's interested, they can talk to me and I'll tell you what I was told, what's going on in different areas. And that's the reason why they left Black Hawk County, but it certainly had nothing to do with wages or benefits.
Yeah, and it's going to be, I mean, I can't promise people telework and 100% work-life balance or, you know, pet insurance or some things. I mean, and people do leave the workplace because they didn't think the county was going to be what it was. So we've been working on our recruiting efforts to make sure we're having very transparent interview sessions so that, is that some of the feedback that we get too, that, you know, it wasn't what I expected. I didn't, and so we're, we're working with the departments to make sure that it's a very authentic, you know, selection process and.
Have you gotten any complaints with the people that are leaving in regards to the current exit form that you're, you're using?
Uh, that it's a bit lengthy. It is really long. Not, I mean, I would like us to, one thing I'd like to explore, I've gotten criticism for not doing stay interviews, why people are staying, and that I'm not taking into account, I'm only looking at why people are leaving. And that's a fair argument. So that's something that we could look at tweaking, our exit survey. I think it needs to be kind of overhauled possibly or looked at, but also engaging, whether it's like focus groups. That's a big thing that Cherry and our office, we've been discussing about, you know, our benefits. We did a recent market study to determine how competitive our benefits are even, and just, those haven't been looked at in over a decade. But also to understanding, you know, what does this workforce kind of expect when it comes to benefits? Or are there ways that we could, you know, gather that information and present it to the board? Because I've had more people ask me about professional development, tuition reimbursement in the last two years, more, you know, than I have expected anywhere previously to that. So, and that's coming up on, on exit interviews a lot too. So I think, yeah, stay interviews and, and looking at our exit survey, kind of revamping that. But no, I haven't had too much criticism of the actual format or feedback.
I think you bring up a good point. As far as where we are in the market, we don't really know. So a market assessment, to me, makes a lot of sense. I think we say how much we, I mean, the employees are what make this county work and, or not work in that case. And we value our employees, and the fact that it was 1980s that we say is our last assessment when we've done this shows to me that we haven't had a third-party look at this.
We've done one, excuse me, we've done one since I've been here.
Really?
In the last 20 years.
It's been said, the 80s for a long time, because I said, I remember Debbie talked about it being then too, so.
And even if it was like a refresh, that's what I'd like to build, is I've seen some, and the thing is, like, other counties are doing it. So it's like, I know they're going to be looking at what the best practices are and the industry standards are. And so, you know, one of the counties said they hadn't done it for 20 years. And we do have to be mindful, the market's always going to change. I can't always, you know, we have to be realistic, like with what we can afford and what makes sense. But I think just having a, I mean, anytime I've done one of these, whether it's with the law enforcement division, we did one with consolidated communications, I did one for general assistance, it's pretty, you know, consistently been that we, we don't, you know, we find out the market and we're like, oh, that doesn't look great, so.
And you said there's other things that we need to look at as well, but I think that's still something that's critical for us to see where we are in that market, whether it's in this local market or how we compare, I guess, even across the state. But I think, yeah.
You said earlier in your comments too, though, that we were right in there, you know, with what the number of people, that the turnover.
Yeah, retention is not.
Right there. And if you, you look at what's happened in Black Hawk County the last five years, drive down the road and see how many businesses are closed.
And I think the pandemic has shifted to some extent. Some people have a, wanting to have more stability, and government offers, in my opinion, stability. And that's something that I think you guys have valued a lot in that we haven't made, you know, at least in my time in HR, I haven't seen tremendous layoffs or things. We didn't furlough anyone during COVID. So, but, and yes, I mean, retire, and that's why I said, I'm not saying it's critical today, but it's something that I want on everybody's radar because we already lag. And is that how the board wants to continue? Or do we want to just say that we're more competitive? And, and we do, you know, we did it for law enforcement. I think you're going to probably have some residual from that, from other staff, thinking, okay, you know, if we're having turnover issues, whether it's public health, conservation, assessor, any of them, or clerical, is there going to be an opportunity to where the board also takes that into consideration, so.
Well, and I think the assessment shows if we're actually at a higher place in the market, which I doubt we are, because we've talked about us being lagging in many areas. So I think if that would show, we are in the top quarter to quartile or whatever, that'd be great for us and kind of reconfirm with us going forward where we're at, but.
It's definitely just a strategic discussion and, so, okay.
I don't know. I just, I'd like to see it added to the list at least.
Yep, so would I.
Either take a break or continue assigned to another day. I think we've talked enough on this subject. Pardon me?
I don't think, no, if there's anybody else that was going to speak, I thought we probably heard from everybody.
Okay. Intervene motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of aye?
Aye.
We are.